All right, I'll just wing it and I'll wait. All right, we're gonna open the meeting. We're special meeting for Board of Selectmen Thursday, April fifteenth at five oh one. Let's um roll call for vote because I only see three of us on here. Mike, yes. Jason?
You did.
Yourself.
Yes.
There you go.
Bill? Bill, is that a yes?
Yes, a yes. You know?
Yeah, okay.
All right, good.
So for whatever reason, this word documented not opening for me, so. Kevin, do you have any updated information on the, I guess this is mostly the trash warrant that we're talking about?
Actually, yeah, it's two things, two changes to the warrant to get it back into balance. So, and I had hoped to be able to give you a report on the trash. Tonight, but the gentleman. Rob Boyer from Waste Management couldn't join us. He can join us Tuesday night, but we can take that up in a minute. When you decide what you want to do next week. So let me just go to the two changes in the budget. And if those are satisfactory, the board, all you do is vote them and then set the meeting for next week and we're done. So. I discovered that. The water sewer department. Which has a great big line in its budget called expense, and it's not really broken down. Part of that money pays their share of the property casualty workers comp budget. So. In the but, so I've netted it out of. The town budget. Because as it stands right now. Without that netted out, it's double counted in the budget. So. The first change you can vote. Is to reduce. The property casualty budget. In the omnibus. From two hundred and forty thousand to two hundred and fourteen thousand. And the twenty six thousand dollar difference is budgeted in the water sewer budget. And when the bill comes in, they'll pay their share directly out of their budget. That makes sense, everybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jason, does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Bill, that makes sense?
Yeah, I'm looking for the warrant because like, you know, if I can pull it up, then I can share my screen with everybody.
So that requires a motion, Mike.
Yeah, I want to make sure that Bill has his information up, so give him a couple minutes.
You know?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right, so we need a motion from someone to accept that change.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we do the change.
I'll second the motion.
Kevin, can you? Help Ed with the motion so it's a little more clear?
And the motion is to. Reduce the property casualty insurance budget from two hundred and forty thousand to two hundred and fourteen thousand, two one four.
Okay, you want, you want a two one four, you said?
Correct.
Okay. So we, I actually should just move the, the two one four, or do you want it stated to, to reduce it from two, two hundred and forty thousand to two hundred and fifteen?
Either eat two one four, but either one's fine. You could just vote to make the insurance budget two hundred and fourteen thousand and automatically we'll change it. In the warrant once you voted.
Okay. Now I'll make a motion that. We make the insurance budget two hundred and fourteen thousand.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion, Jason?
No.
Bill?
Yeah.
Yes.
Are we sure this is the right number now?
Well, here's what we're sure of. I took the current year's budget. And multiplied, as you recall, by five percent, and that's what arrived at the two forty. Taking this twenty six thousand out. Is because water sewer already carries that number in their budget. The two fourteen is not the final budget because we haven't completed the bidding yet. And so there's a possibility. That the two fourteen will go down. But. I can't tell you that right now because we won't have the bidding process done for at least a couple weeks, probably more.
Okay. What is the possibility?
Go down.
What is the possibility that it goes up?
It's not gonna go up. It can't go up because we've got the, we've got the renewal from Maya, that's the worst case scenario. And when we bid it. They're not gonna go up on their quote, they're gonna go down if anything.
So the two fourteen is the worst number there is?
Yep.
I'll quote you on that.
Very good.
All right. All in favor, we're gonna roll call, Jason?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
Ed?
Yes.
Mike, yes.
Okey doke. Uh, second thing is the rubbish budget. Now, right now you have it set at seven hundred thousand, that was a bit of an arbitrary number. That we did the other night. So per the board's instructions, I had a conversation with Waste Management. And then shared that with the chairman and that's what led to tonight's meeting. Now, I'm not gonna get into all of that. Because that's what we're gonna do next week, but here's what I will tell you. I took the numbers in their proposal. Which again, represents the worst case scenario because. This is their proposal and it is a definite number, it may get better, but it is at least a definite number. So here's the, using the tipping fee. Excuse me, or collection cost, I should say, in their proposal. And the tonnage which we generated last year from July twenty to March twenty one. That would be the actual tonnage this year for three quarters. The same tonnage that we used last year from April twenty to June twenty. Times the collection rate. Equals. An est- a estimated collection cost of three hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-four. I'm sorry, correction, that's the current year. For twenty-two is four seventeen, four ninety-five. And that's based on the collection fee of eighty-two dollars fifty cents a ton, which is in their proposal. Then you take the tipping cost. Which is times the tonnage. That again is in their proposal. And that equals an estimated disposal cost of one hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and eighty. The final component. Is to take what's called the processing cost, the processing cost. Is when the recyclables go to the MRF, to the Material Resource Recovery Plant in Haverhill up on four ninety-five. Put on a conveyor belt and people literally stand there and pick out things, pick out cardboard, cardboard, pick out PET two and whatever. That cost to have them do that manual labor again is expressed in the contract. Hundred and ten dollars an hour, I believe is the fee, I don't have that in front of me. That gets reduced by whatever the value of the recyclables that they can sell. Now, in the past year. They were around fifty, sixty dollars a ton. We just got the April, the March figures that improved by about ten dollars a ton. But using the same number from fiscal twenty-one. To apply toward the tonnage in fiscal twenty-two would equal a processing spend. Of twenty-seven thousand one eighty-six. And the grand total of all that is six hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-one. And I have rounded that to six hundred and thirty. Now. Several things can affect this. First, the tonnage. The tonnage is a fluctuating number. So in order to compute this budget, what I've done is use the current year's tonnage. The tonnage from the prior year was a little better and the tonnage from the year prior to that was a little bit better. The reason tonnage went up this year, probably by about ten or fifteen percent, is more than likely attributable to COVID and the fact that many, many more people are at home. We don't have any other theories why it went up, that one seems to make sense. Second factor is the collection cost, now the collection cost is a number that's in their proposal. And that's not gonna fluctuate. Now. The tonnage. For trash can fluctuate, so can the recyclables. But we don't have a better way of estimating tonnage than to take the current year. Because more than likely that represents more than you're gonna get. For July one, twenty-one to June thirty, twenty-two, as we come out of COVID and fewer and fewer people are home. And more people going back to work and hopefully are generating less trash. So the six thirty. I'm sorry, yeah, six thirty is a very safe figure. In terms of. What the budget can be. The decision you'll make next week, which. Doesn't have anything to do with the six thirty right now. Is whether you want to accept. Their renewal proposal. Which is what generated this six hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget estimate. Or you want a bid. And. After talking to Mike, we've come up with a couple options. That they will present to you. That could potentially lower the cost. Again. Depending upon decisions that you would make. I would tell you candidly that I don't think bidding. Is gonna produce a materially different proposal. And the reason is. The biggest, the two biggest factors driving this are tonnage, and that's neutral because it doesn't matter who picks it up, the tonnage is the same. The second biggest factor is the prevailing wage. Which affects the collection cost and the processing cost. And that's set by the state and everybody has to use the identical set of numbers, nobody gets to use anything different. So the only real factor that's movable. In a bid process is gonna be the tipping fee, i.e. the cost to put it on the floor and dispose of it. Waste Management owns the plant in Haverhill. They own the landfill in Rochester, New Hampshire. And the next closest plant. I'm told is out in Springfield. There's a very small plant somewhere nearby, but it can't handle this kind of municipal tonnage. So the likelihood of somebody underbidding them is not great. Now, having said that. It's really got nothing to do with the six hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget, that's a solid budget based on the current proposal they made. Is it possible that you might decide next week to bid it and therefore reduces price? Yeah, it's possible, that's gonna be up to you guys. Is it possible you may look at one or two options that they're gonna present you with next week? That would restructure the way they do the collection. Which again would reduce the cost, again, that's gonna be up to you. And whatever other questions that you've got that you want to pose to them. But based on the current trash collection practice. Four thirty-five gallon barrels a week. The current. Tonnage of recyclables, the current tonnage of trash, trash. Times the numbers they put in their proposal, that yields a six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar budget. And as I say, I rounded at the six thirty. Now.
Kevin?
Yep.
When you're talking eighty-two fifty a ton times whatever number that gets you to four seventeen, I guess I could backdate the math on that.
Yeah, I can give you the, I can give you the numbers.
Yeah, what is that number, I mean, because I did have a conversation with someone I know over there.
Yep.
Basically, he's saying that it's usually fifty percent of your population times your tonnage rate.
Well, I'm not using, I'm not using industry standards, I'm using Groveland's actual tonnage.
Right, right, but it's by population, so if our population is eighty-five hundred, call it. It'd be fifty percent of that times that eighty-two fifty would give us that top number, not four seventeen, but three sixty, three fifty, whatever that number is.
Well, I would, I would caution you from doing it that way. Only because the actual tonnages, and I've got them right in front of me here. July two thousand twenty to March two thousand twenty-one was one thousand six hundred and twenty-six tons. From April two thousand twenty to June two thousand twenty was five hundred and ninety-eight tons.
Right, and like you said, those, those numbers are different this past year because of COVID, everybody's home and everybody's doing everything.
Yeah, and I think. I think the formula you're talking would be more like what I would call a normal year, if you will. And that would probably generate a total collection. Cost of somewhere south of three hundred or a little over three hundred. And this whole thing would go down by a hundred grand. Problem is. As we come out of COVID in July. You're probably gonna have a couple more months where a lot of people are still home. Now summertime, a lot of people go on vacation, so tonnage typically falls in the summer. And by the time you get into October, November, hopefully, we're pretty much through COVID, people are, you know, going back to work. And we're not generating these kind of tonnages.
Right, so if I'm using that math that the guy had told me about.
Yeah.
You're taking an overall rough population of Groveland of ten thousand, and this is these numbers, but not standard numbers.
Yeah.
Dividing that in half gives you five thousand, times that eighty-two fifty gets you that four seventeen.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So I would, I mean, you know, guys, the reality is you never know what this is gonna be because it's based on tonnage and. You can't predict tonnage. But. The favorable factors are. It's likely high because of COVID is gonna go down. And recycling as, as industry recovers and goes back, remember, most of the recycling goes to the Asian markets. And right now those are in pretty tough shape. So again, as, as the world's economy starts to come up. The recycling should get better as well. So I'm pretty confident if you do a six hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget, you're probably not gonna spend that much. I mean, that's eighty-three thousand dollars over the current year's budget. Which is a pretty hefty increase. But on the other hand, at six thirty, the budget balances now. I will tell you, it just balances, to be specific. With a six hundred and thirty thousand dollar rubbish collection budget and the new. Two fourteen property casualty, you would be positively balanced to revenue in the amount of seven thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. So my, and I have one more thing I need to tell you about when you're all done with this. So you're all aware of it. And before we vote, the Finance Board voted to concur, voted the two fourteen number in property casualty. On solid waste, they. Eliminated their prior vote at the five eighty-seven number. And they took a vote that they would concur with your number in the budget as soon as you voted tonight.
Anybody wanna make a motion so we can start a discussion on this?
I'll make a motion to reduce the trash budget from seven hundred thousand to six hundred and thirty thousand.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, any further discussion, Bill?
Yeah, I just worry that it's not enough of a buffer, I mean, the six thirty to his six twenty-eight, one sixty-one is only eighteen hundred bucks. Which in the grand scheme of things, in a twenty million dollar budget, is peanuts. I, 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 I think that the tonnage is gonna go down too. I'm firmly convinced and I, I would almost. It almost sounds like you negotiated the contract for them. Because I would have been adamant about our number should be based on twenty nineteen, a normal year. Not twenty twenty. The year of the pandemic, when everyone was home, no one was eating out because it wasn't possible. No one was going anywhere because it wasn't possible. I talked to my trash guy every week, he told me it absolutely exploded. Last year because everyone was home, a lot of it were trying to do remodeling, stuffing that stuff in, 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 in the, in the trash. He'd have to make two trips sometimes just to finish his route in Groveland. When a normal day, he'd be finished by four thirty-five. So. I don't know.
So do you think six thirty is not enough and you're worried about it increasing, or do you think six thirty is enough and you're anticipating it going down? Because it's going to be more towards a normal year as we move towards twenty-one?
Yeah, I, I think it's gonna go down, I just, you know. I guess i- if I was in the negotiations, I'd, I, I'd stress that, that this contract should be based on twenty nineteen, not twenty twenty. Because that's the anomaly, that's the year that doesn't, that's the one off. And you're not, it's not based on.
Bill, you're not setting.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, Bill, you're not setting the contract, that's what you're gonna do next week. The six thirty is just the estimate of their number times the tonnage, this is just your budget, this isn't the contract.
All right.
So the other thing with that, Bill, is the tonnage is one forty per household, I think I'm doing that right. And if we want to. Lower that to one oh five, that's gonna save us more money per household than that overall. Contract number will go down from six twenty-eight, one sixty-one to call it six hundred or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Now, I have six people in my household. And I don't use a hundred and forty tons. You know, I'm, I'm not putting out that much trash and we have a lot of trash, so. I'd be confident that instead of a hundred and forty ton per, per household, a hundred and five.
Tons, Mike, you mean gallons.
Yeah, I'm sorry, gallons, a hundred and forty gallons down to a hundred and five gallons is still gonna be adequate for ninety-five percent of the population. And if we needed to, then we could do the, the trash bag thing. Two box, whatever it is at Town Hall. To, to, to offset those other houses that may have those things once in a while that are over that one oh five.
You'll have an estimate.
You know what, most of those households are, are the bigger households. And now it's an extra burden on the larger family, you know, and I hate to do that, you know.
We'll have an estimate for you next week when you meet with him. For what. The reduction from three, I'm sorry, four thirty-five gallon barrels to three thirty-five gallon barrels would mean. In the contract or not in the contract, but in the cost. His contract is a per unit bid. The units is the tonnage, so. But he'll have an estimate for you of if you did drop to three barrels instead of four. And then sold the yellow bags, so people who wanna have more just buy a roll of yellow bags and put the yellow bag out. He'll have all those estimates for you next week, I hope, I was gonna have them for you tonight, but he sent me an email late this afternoon and said he's still working on it.
So tonight, we're, we're, we're working with the number and then next week, we're trying to refine that to make sure that either we have more of a buffer or we know exactly what that's gonna come in at, that six twenty-eight, one, two, one.
Yeah, and you're also deciding.
But that's the top.
Yeah.
All right, I'm fine.
We're also deciding next week if you wanna take their five-year renewal offer or you wanna go out to bid. Understanding the mechanics of it all and. This will be your chance to ask him a lot of questions and then decide what you wanna do. I mean, that's basically the decision you make next week will be to take the renewal bid or go out to bid.
Okay. You got that, Bill?
Yeah, yeah.
Ed, anything else?
No.
Jason?
No, I'm good.
All right, so we have a motion in a second, we have discussion, let's do a roll call vote, Ed?
Ed?
Yes.
Yeah, Bill?
Yes. He froze.
Yes.
Mike, yes?
It's connection froze there, but he's back.
Yeah.
Yeah, he said yes. Is that it?
All right, so that's.
Didn't move, so I was wondering what happened.
So that's the two things that you needed to vote on, there's one other thing I have to tell you about, so you are now in balance, the budget is back in balance. To the tune of seven thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. That doesn't include several things that are in the warrant. That are separate from the budget that I have to figure out the funding plan for and where we're gonna get the money for that. But the omnibus budget and everything related to it is now in balance with revenue and you got a tiny, tiny surplus. However. We got news day before yesterday. That in the Senate version of the state budget. They removed the provision that allowed the S R two money. To be used. By the regional school for the purpose of reducing their assessment. As you recall, we use two hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars. So if that two hundred and fifty thousand nine eleven cannot be used, there's two choices. One, the regional school lowers their budget. Or two, the legislature restores the authorization so that they can use the two fifty nine eleven. And the Senate's current vote then won't matter. One other bit of news I wanted to give you, there's been a lot of concern. About what do we do next year? And if you had a chance to read that email I sent. The S R three money, which is in the American Rescue Plan, is gonna be around nine hundred thousand dollars. Hold, hold that, eight, eight to nine hundred, put it that way. So the good news is. The school's gonna get, and that money is allocated just for Groveland, Merrimack gets a big chunk, West Newbury gets a big chunk. So. In terms of worrying about fiscal twenty-three, July one twenty-three to June thirty, twenty-three. And the regional school budget, if you get the S R money. Well, we already know we're getting that. If you are allowed to use it. Then using only a fraction of the S R three money, you'll be able to balance next year's regional school budget going away very easily. So there's a lot up in the air right now with that and. I'll be calling Senator Tar. To let him know what the situation is, Merrimack already called their rep, let him know. I'll be calling ours tomorrow, Monday, or Tuesday, Monday's a holiday. And letting them know, and at some point, they're probably gonna ask you guys. Because, you know, I can draw the factual. Case to them, but really the politics is on your end. And I think it's gonna be important for you all to stress to your rep and Senator. That. You know, this is gonna create a really bad situation because. If the school. Doesn't wanna cut their budget. Then the solution to this is they go to a special town meeting for. For anybody from the three towns that wants to show up. And then they have to pass a new budget. Or they, and if that budget, same budget as they have now passes. Then you have to go to an override and you have to ask the voters to override for two hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars. And it only takes two of the three towns to force the budget on the remaining third town. Of course, if two towns vote against their budget. Then they have to go cut their budget. In order to avoid all that, hopefully. Senator Tar can just get this thing put back in because there's really no earthly reason. Why they took it out, towns all over the state use their S R money to reduce the regional school budget. And it's kind of a dirty trick. You know, at this time of year to be removing. The allowance. When every, a lot of towns have already set their budgets and regional schools on the basis of being able to use the money, so. Come along, take it away, it's outrageous.
Did you say you're going to reach out to Senator Tar?
I am gonna call his. Staff tomorrow and either talk to them or talk directly to the Senator.
Let me know what you, what you, what you get out of that, or if you can't get ahold of him directly. I have a pretty good relationship with him, so I have his direct number.
Good news is I can also call the Senate, the House Minority Leader. Brad Jones, I grew up with him and know him very well and. I don't think Brad is aware of this, but I can tell you. You know, the good thing about Senator Tar is a Republican, the good thing about Brad Jones, he's a Republican and the governor's a Republican. So. At least it's the right party that's, that's setting the tone. And hopefully with good, with Republican representation for Groveland, you, you're gonna get the governor's ear and you're gonna get, and we'll get this thing turned around hopefully. So I will let you know, Mike. If I don't get Senator Tar directly, I'll let you know because he probably, you get much better likelihood of getting him on the phone than I do.
Oh, yeah.
Although I'll say he's been very responsive when I've called before.
Yeah, no, he's really good about it, but I, I text with him fairly often, so, and he does respond to me relatively quickly depending on his schedule, so.
Well, I, I wouldn't wait, Mike, to be honest with you, if you happen to get to him before I do, all the better. Because this is gonna matter a whole lot more coming from the elected side of the house than from the appointed side. The three managers and Greg, we had a Zoom meeting day before yesterday or yesterday, I forget. And basically, everybody's gonna call the legislative delegation, so. You got three administrators calling and a school business guy, that's important. But frankly, the political side of it is much more important, so I would call, in fact, if five of you call, it's, it, all the better.
Yep, I will, I will text them as soon as I get off this call.
Okay. Thank you, so tomorrow, tonight. Catherine is, Catherine, you got the dates on the cover corrected that Ruth pointed out, thank you. So we're gonna make the three copies. There is some plan to get it to you gentlemen for signature. Death and the chief are standing by tomorrow to post it. And then we're gonna take a copy of the signed one, and we're gonna make a bunch of copies for. For you folks, for the. The Finance Board, probably for the Department of Heads and a small additional stack. And then we'll send it out to a printer and get, I don't know, a hundred, hundred and ten, a hundred, how many, how many copies do you want printed?
Usually it's a hundred to one twenty-five-ish if I remember correctly, Bill, do you think that's the right number?
I don't remember, but there's gotta be an invoice from last year, just, you know, find it and make it.
All right, we'll find that, we'll get that many copies printed, but we're gonna have copies for all of you printed right away because we may not have the printed. because we may not have the printed copies back for a couple of weeks. Um, those would be the ones for town media, but you all will have a hard copy of everything, um, in your box at Town Hall. Uh, probably, um, maybe tomorrow, maybe not be Tuesday, but you'll have it shortly. I wouldn't try to print it off the, um, the email because documents that don't fit easily. So
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot, the, the, the word and Excel logic that's built into that warrant is crazy. I told Catherine, next year you ought to just retype the whole thing and take all the word punctuation out of it because it, we spent more time formatting than we did with substance.
All right. Save the tree and just save me to, send me the PDF. Save the tree. I don't need the, I don't have to need the document writing.
One other thing, if you saw the email with draft number three, you saw I sent two of the articles to Bill Hewitt, Town Council to look at. And he just, he just sent me back an email just before the meeting and approved them. So everything in the warrant right now is correct. And your numbers are in there, assuming passage. So those are correct. So we're good to go.
Okay. All right. So everything else is all set. Um, Catherine, whenever you get the final done with Ruth or whatever edit she wanted to talk to you about, you know, you text all of us for signature. I'm available for uh, the next five, six hours anyways.
Okay. Um, I just need addresses for Jason and Bill so I can run over there. Let them do it.
You could probably see Jason's from the Town Hall.
You just, yeah, just walk down to the dog park. Oh, is it still raining? And if it's not raining, I'll be in the batting cages. So you can drop them both off at the same time.
Catherine, what, um, the only edits I know of that Ruth was talking about are the ones we already made. There wasn't anything else, was there?
Um, she, I just got a text from her and she asked, um, about doing a Zoom, um, to go over, she wants to go page by page with, for edits.
You can't, we can't edit anymore. Um, this document is now final.
If it's wrong, it needs to be edited and corrected.
Well, it's got to go up on the wall tomorrow and I don't know if anything's wrong. It's been, this has been reviewed and edited to death this week.
Well, right now, obviously Ruth has some edits that she doesn't feel comfortable with. So I think, uh, considering all the work she's put in, and which is considerable amount that her and her committee have done, I think we ought to give her the, extend her the courtesy to make sure that her, you know, edits are, are reviewed and, and, and properly vetted to make sure they're correct or not correct. I mean, if we're going, uh, let's, you know, there's no, there's no reason to put out a bad document if we're going this far, right?
Yeah. Connect with Ruth, um, find out what she's found and make sure that those are editable, whatever the changes are. I don't think they're major changes, but.
Well, here's the deal, guys. The warrant is owned by the Board of Selectmen. And the statute on it is quite clear. So if somebody wants to edit that document, you are the only people that can edit other than typos, a wrong date, you know, something like that, something's not underlined. I mean, yeah, we can do that. That's.
Yeah, she's not asking for material changes. She's asking for.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, no problem at all. It's just if anybody wants to do something substantive, only the Board of Selectmen can do that.
Yeah, it's not substantive stuff. It's more.
All right, no problem.
Presentation.
Great.
So Catherine, connect with her. Let her know, let me know if you need me for anything. Like I said, I'm available. And then, um, if we can get those out tonight to sign, you know, I, whatever we need to do.
Yeah.
So let's get a motion to adjourn at five thirty-five.
Does she need an address? Or we want, you want to go by Town Hall? What do you?
Unless you want it, your address on the public meeting. It's up to you.
Oh, yeah. Then, well, and I've already had people pick it in the house, you know?
Just text Catherine your address offline and then she knows where to go. I mean, the, the three of us are within walking distance. So.
All right, Catherine, I'll be standing by. Any problems, let me know. I got another Zoom starting at six thirty. But if you text me, I'll keep my phone on and I'll see it and I'll break away to take the call. Okay?
All right. Five thirty-five.
A second.
All right. All in favor? We'll do a roll call for the heck of it. Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mike? Yes. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night all.
A good night.